...panel here, and then we have our candidates. I'll set out just a few rules. You'll have 30 seconds to make an opening statement. Oh, preliminarily, I'd like to say that Suzette LeGrand, or LeGrange?
LeGrand.
LeGrange. She is ill today, and she was going to be here, but she's not able to make it because she's ill, and so we'll excuse her for that. Of course, she doesn't get this marvelous experience, and we don't get to hear from her, but we do wish her well. So what we'll do is we'll have 30-second opening statements. Then we're going to go through the panel for questions and possibly follow-up questions. It's very important that you know that you only have one minute to respond to those questions, okay? And you have 30 seconds for your opening and your closing statements each. I do interrupt, and I very much appreciate you respecting that time. There have been a few people that have tried to talk over it, and that is not appreciated. So if you'll respect that, we'll all play by the same rules, and everything will be great. So we will start with 30-second opening statements. We'll start with Councilman Ross.
Thank you, Mr. Stubbs.
Thank you, Mr. Stubbs. Appreciate it. Let me say this in 30 seconds. Thank you very much for having us. I always consider it a privilege to come and speak to veterans in politics, and love to see this kind of panel because there's some very talented people on this panel. And for veterans in politics, you guys just keep getting better every year, so I'd like to see that, appreciate your activity in the community, and thank you for having me.
Thank you very much. Mr. Rodriguez.
My name's Paul Rodriguez. I am a veteran of the United States Air Force, 1992, 1996. I had the pleasure of serving in Desert Storm and Operation Provide Comfort. And I am a man who believes that actions and decisions I make today, I'll have to sleep with tonight and live with tomorrow, that they are reflections of who I am and the foundation which defines the depth of my character. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So we'll start with our panel questions. We will start with Mr. Brooks like we did the last time. And so, Mr. Brooks, would you like to pose the first question?
Yeah, I would. Gentlemen, thank you for joining us here this evening. The question I'm going to ask you is basically the same question I asked the other two council ward candidates is Las Vegas, the city has, for homeless veterans, double the national average of what we should as far as homeless veterans goes. Last year, we had 1,430 homeless veterans. What is it that you're doing? I know that the city does do some things. We get some money from the state, the 13 million, you know, but what are you actively doing to try and help with the homeless veterans issues? What would you like to change? And what can we do to actually help veterans get into actually home ownership rather than just giving them a temporary halfway house or something like that to get into?
Mr. Ross, would you like to start?
You bet. Two questions you ask. What am I doing for homeless veterans? Is there a way the city of Las Vegas doing for homeless veterans? Not enough. I can tell you that right now. Knowing that our veterans population continues to increase, not just homeless veterans, but veterans themselves are coming here to Las Vegas to retire, to work, whatever it is. The city of Las Vegas is not doing enough. I'm not sure we can ever do enough for homeless veterans. In regards to getting veterans into homes, I've worked very closely with a lot of nonprofits personally in regards to the foreclosure crisis that we've been faced with. I haven't been asked about the homeless veterans issue and trying to get them into homes. I can tell you this. The Las Vegas real estate market today is the very best market to be in. Homes are going quickly, and the prices for these homes are extremely low. Number one thing we need to do to veterans is get them to work. We've got to create more opportunities in the city of Las Vegas, Clark County, state of Nevada, to get veterans to work.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ross. Mr. Rodriguez.
You know, as a veteran, when I got out, we, you know, we, in the military, we follow orders. You know, we don't really have much to think about. We were given orders and we followed them. Okay? A lot of people don't understand is when veterans get out of the military, it's not such an easy transition. Okay? You're going, now you're having to make decisions that you didn't have to make in the past. I think what we need to do is we need to create a platform where veterans, when they get out, they get some kind of assistance where, okay, this is how we transition from military to civilian. Okay? Now you're going to be in charge of, you know, your own finances, and you're going to be in charge of certain things that you didn't have to do in the past, you just follow orders. You know, you lived in the barracks, you didn't have to pay mortgages. Okay? A lot of it is just, I think, lack of the ability to transition from military to civilian. So we just need some help in that area.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rodriguez. Mr. Byron Brooks, would you like to pose a question?
Hi. This question is separate for each of you. Mr. Rodriguez, what I'd like to know is specifically, if elected, what you would do to promote some of the changes that you feel need to be made, specific changes? And Mr. Ross, as the incumbent, what specific things would you do to continue on with the path that you've chosen?
Mr. Rodriguez.
What would I like to change in 60 seconds? All right. First and foremost, safety will always be first and foremost as long as I'm a city councilman. Okay? Two, I want to create jobs. Okay? Not by government giving jobs, but government creating a platform for businesses to create jobs. Okay? And three, there has to be, there has to be a way that we can cut costs. Okay? I can explain that, but it's going to take a little more than 60 seconds, but cutting costs by not laying off people, but we need to audit from the up, from the top down. If we're going to cut costs, we need to cut costs from the top down, not from the bottom off. Okay? A lot of our people got laid off that are making $30,000, $40,000 a year, and people that are still making upper six digits are still receiving the same amount of money. We have to audit our three biggest expenditures, which is salary, benefits, and contracts.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rodriguez. Mr. Ross.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks, for the question. I've already been doing it. I'm certainly going to disagree with Mr. Rodriguez in regards to jobs. For the past eight years in the city of Las Vegas, I have been meeting, I go to two or three homeowners associations a month, I've done that for eight years, to get the information of what's happening in neighborhoods. I'm connected to my constituents. I've created an online email newsletter that goes out twice a month. I did this eight years ago to keep my constituents informed of what's happening in their neighborhood, what's happening in their city. It's a great resource. About 5,000 people subscribe to that, and then homeowners associations cut and paste that and send it out to their residents as well. In regards to foreclosures, I mentioned earlier, last year, I passed a foreclosure registration program, holding banks accountable for maintaining foreclosed properties. Our neighborhoods were going into the toilet because the banks were doing nothing to maintain those properties. It was damaging our own property values in every one of our neighborhoods, so I'm doing it. I'm streamlining the way we do business in the city of Las Vegas to make it easier for businesses to be in business and put people to work.
Thank you. Mr. Andre Haynes, are you okay? Okay. Mr. Churchill.
Thank you both. Thank you both for coming in. Understanding that Las Vegas has the same type of council setup that Los Las Vegas has, meaning that we have specific ward voting, and understanding that every council person generally serves the entire city, but let's speak specifically of Ward Six. What do you see? Because every ward has its own identity and its own specific issues. What do you see in Ward Six that would be the most pressing over the coming years? And how would you look at those and resolve those issues?
Mr. Ross, can you start with this?
You bet. Thank you, Mr. Churchill, for the question. Growth, growth and development in Ward Six in Centennial Hills. I've worked very closely with NDOT to reconfigure the newly will-be-one-day Centennial spaghetti bowl, which is US 95 and the 215 interchange. The connectivity was terrible, and in order for those businesses to be successful, I asked NDOT five years ago to rework that configuration for transportation needs, so we get better circulation. Schools, education is a huge issue right now for everybody. We just broke ground on the new Somerset Academy, a very popular charter school on Sky Point, right behind Metro Pizza. It's a phenomenal facility. It's going to be K through 12 eventually when all phases are built. I am trying to do everything I possibly can to help the existing businesses out there and welcome new businesses out to Centennial Hills. Again, new businesses, new jobs, that's what this city needs.
Thank you. And Mr. Rodriguez.
You know, a lot of the problems can be solved by business coming in. It's all about revenue. I mean, that's the bottom line. You know, we create jobs, we make it easier for people to start new companies. We make it so easy for them so that they will take that leap of faith. Okay? That's what we need. We need to create new companies. Okay? New companies will bring new jobs. Okay? All it takes is for companies to hire one or two people. It will drive the economy. It really will. I mean, Boston, New York, and Chicago during the Depression have proved it. Okay? What we need is new businesses and more revenue coming in. When people have jobs, people will spend money. When people have jobs, they'll buy things. That's what we need to improve on in Ward Six. We need to bring businesses.
Thank you. Mr. Barrett.
Greetings. As a sitting, sitting councilman, what's your role in protecting the civil rights of the citizens of the city of Las Vegas from the occasional bad behavior of Metro?
That was directed specifically at Mr. Ross?
No, to both.
Okay.
If you're sitting, I want them both to answer.
Okay. Well, then we'll start with Mr. Ross.
Well, we all know the sheriff is an elected position, and anyone who holds public office as a public servant needs to be held accountable. He's responsible ultimately for the actions of his police officers in his department, and I hold him accountable for the actions of those police officers. He's under the gun all the time, pardon the pun, but he is, literally under the gun all the time. Human behavior is human behavior. You might have a great cop, you might have a bad cop. We need to be valiant in continuing to protect our civil rights as citizens in this community. He recognizes that as well. Fortunately, we have a district attorney that understands that as well, and he's going to fight for those rights as well. It's a challenge for me because we don't have direct control of that department other than fiscally and with the fiscal affairs, with the people who represent the city of Las Vegas on fiscal affairs. There's five members of that fiscal affairs committee. One from the public, two from the county, two from the city. Forty percent of that budget is the cities, and 60% of that budget is the counties. So they too need to be held accountable, and he, we need to be a voice in his ear expressing our concerns about the civil rights of our citizens.
Thank you. Time is up. Mr. Rodriguez.
Well, two things. I kind of look at it as a pastor of a church. Okay? A pastor of a church is held accountable at a higher level than those who are in membership, okay, or even in the council of a church. Our officials, our city officials, our police officers should be held at a higher standard because they are upholding the law. Okay? My best example is how many of you folks have seen a police officer change lanes without using a signal? Is that fair? No, they need to set the example. They cannot be the excuse. They need to be the example to follow, not the excuse to hide behind. Okay? As far as the sheriff's department, you know, when we do sign those budget, okay, it is in our power to ask questions. You know, we should hold the sheriff accountable and say, hey, before we sign this paper, I need to know that, hey, I need to know that you have a aggressive plan to fix this, this, and this, not just, not just.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rodriguez.
Blame me, handle something, so.
Yeah. Follow-up questions, Sheriff?
Is the current district attorney an improvement?
Let's start with Mr. Rodriguez on that one.
I have never, I have not met the district attorney, so I can't really, you know, answer that for you.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Ross.
I can. I've served with Steve Wilson for a few years on the Las Vegas City Council. I know him to be fair and equitable in all of his dealings. I believe he looks at both sides of every issue clearly because he certainly did on the Las Vegas City Council, so I think yes.
Thank you. Mr. Wagner.
Councilman Ross, my name's Kenneth Wagner. I was wounded in the first Gulf War, and once prior to that, my son was just wounded in Afghanistan under this current president. I was wounded under Republican. My brother was killed in Vietnam under a Democratic president. My family's never decided left or right, whether, whatever president, whether we fight or not. A few months ago, Steve Sanson and I were going to get a certificate of appreciation for my son, who had just got wounded, who was a Nevada resident, and when you found out that it was me, well, because I was running for Congress at the time, your office decided that my son wasn't going to get that letter. Have you always played partisan politics towards our veterans if it was an issue over someone being a Republican or a Democrat?
Mr. Wagner, I'm sorry you feel that way. There was a mix-up in communication in regards to the day your son was supposed to receive that certificate, and he's still waiting. So I'm confused in regards to what you mean, Republican or Democrat. I don't play partisan politics.
Then what would you call it, since I went down there and I was on the schedule to get that for my son, who was in the hospital at that time for being wounded for this country under a Democratic president? That's what I mean.
Well, Mr. Wagner, I would ask that you accept my sincere apologies for the miscommunication that occurred in my office at City Hall.
Now, when a question is directed at only one person, out of fairness, we always give the other candidate an opportunity to make a statement on that subject if you wish to. So, Mr. Rodriguez, would you like to make a statement on that issue?
As a veteran, and some of you folks are, we all know what it's like to stand on the fence, and we do. We've lost friends in, you know, past wars, and I think that, you know, people who have sacrificed as much as a lot of the veterans, especially those who have come back, you know, have lost friends, lost family members, yeah, I'd like to see a little bit more probably sensitivity towards their needs.
And as is also customary, because this was specifically about Mr. Ross, we will give you an opportunity for rebuttal as well. Would you like? Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. Mr. Darby, do you have a happy question for us?
Happier than the last time. I listened to Ted Sagerblum speak, well, probably a month ago, and he was very distraught over our home values. And every play he gave a speech on how many different ways he had attempted to rectify this problem, where somebody bought a $400,000 house, and it's worth $200,000, and they're underwater and no way out. Anyway, spoke for about a half an hour. So he said, "I'm going to propose a new law up in Carson City that would require the banks to drop the mortgage to what it is currently, how it's currently valued." I don't know if that has a chance to go through, but it's a wonderful idea. I'd like each one of the candidates to speak on that issue.
Okay. Can we start with Mr. Rodriguez?
I think we'd all like that. I mean, you know, I'm in the same boat. You know, we bought a house and we're underwater, you know, but at the end of the day, I told that bank that this is how much money I'm going to pay for this house at this interest rate. And, you know, until such time as I can no longer afford that house, then I would, you know, look for other avenues. But for as long as I can afford it, you know, at the end of the day, I told them that's how much money I'm going to pay for it, and that's how much I'm going to pay for it. You know, as far as, you know, banks working with us, you know, I'll always put the full weight of my office into working with banks and making it easier for homeowners, as much as I can. But if they're still a business, they're still a private entity, then their job is to make money, just like any other business. You know, and we have to be fair from both sides of the fence, so.
Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. Mr. Ross.
I think any way to keep families in their homes is a brilliant idea. The foreclosure registry ordinance I mentioned earlier, Mr. Darby, has done a couple of things. It's kept our property values up in our neighborhoods, but it's also given us a direct line of communication with the banks. If more families could stay in their homes, we'd have a lot less problems in this community. So I can't disagree with Senator Sagerblum's proposal to do so. It's going to be a challenge, however. They're huge banks, and we all know this economic, worldwide financial crisis came from the lending institutions and the money people of this world, not just here in this country, but of the world. So I actually support that idea.
Thank you very much. Mr. Roblauer.
Right now, if you're a small business owner trying to start a new business, you have to get a business license from the state, from the county, and if you're going to different cities, from Las Vegas, Henderson, North Las Vegas, that's a lot of money to pour out when you're starting a new business. Would you be open to, which other states, by the way, are doing right now in other cities, maybe a $1 fee for the first year for a new business if they try to start a new business in Las Vegas?
Mr. Ross, can you start this?
Actually, that's a brilliant idea, but I will tell you one thing I've already done. I've already authored a multi-jurisdictional business licensing program for the city of Las Vegas, which we will see on an agenda within a month to address that very issue. I ran a business for 10 years, and I had to have a license in every jurisdiction I did business in, and it was challenging and costly. So having that personal experience firsthand, knowing what business owners go through today, especially if you work throughout this valley, I authored this bill or this ordinance. I think it'll be very successful, and I expect a unanimous vote.
So you'd be on the record as support a $1 fee for the first year for a new business?
Absolutely. We've, if I may continue my 60 seconds there, we've already done something similar in downtown Las Vegas, in the Entertainment District. You can get a liquor license for $0, which is normally $40,000, which is significant. It is our way of saying, listen, we want businesses to open, we want you to come downtown, we want you to be successful.
Thank you. Mr. Rodriguez.
Actually, I totally agree with that, but I want to go a little bit farther than that. Okay? Not only is it, you know, $1 for the first year, but most businesses, we own a pest control company in town, okay? It doesn't take, it takes a while for you to generate enough revenue, enough customers to start functioning at a full-time level. On your second year, if you're still working part-time, we should, why not just make them pay a third of the cost for as long as they're only paying, as long as they're doing it part-time? Most companies have a full-time job when they start a company. Okay? After the first year, you only pay a third of the cost for as long as you're still doing it full-time. And when you do it full-time, then you can pay the full-time cost. Okay? Let's make it so easy for people to start their own companies that they would take that leap of faith, which is the biggest issue right now. We are 14,000 business licenses below our decade average right now in the city of Las Vegas.
Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. Melody Howard.
Good evening, gentlemen. Thank you for attending these endorsement interviews. I recently spoke with a woman, actually, she contacted me, and she is a female veteran, and she is homeless here in Las Vegas. She went to US Vets for assistance, and the reason I'm asking this is because your predecessors have mentioned that the city council is working with US Vets on transitional housing. She went to one of the housing, which was on Main Street. It's all men. There were only two women, two female occupied apartments. They were terrified. They didn't feel safe between the transient nature of the neighborhood and the fact that they were the only two women. They felt very unsafe, and she came to realize, and she did more and more research, that there's absolutely nothing in Clark County overall, and particularly in Las Vegas, to assist female veterans who are either low income or homeless or older, maybe in their 60s, and living on fixed housing and stuff like that. What can you, as a city councilman, do to work with US Vets to provide a bit of a safer environment for those female veterans?
Can we start with Mr. Rodriguez?
You know, I spoke with this older gentleman, and he told me that one day, we will all be judged based on what we do for those that are lesser of us. Okay? I wasn't aware that there's no services for them. I know that we, my wife and I have worked with women that are battered women, okay? They have these places where they can go. I'm sure that we can make something where, I mean, there's, you know, there's funding out there. There's, if we have to squeeze and if we have to beg, steal, borrow to get funding for things like that, I mean, those are critical stuff. Those are things that are not, you know, that cannot be overlooked. So.
Thank you. Mr. Ross.
As I said in a previous question, we're not doing enough. And I can assure you, knowing this information now, I will certainly do something about it next week, as a matter of fact, as soon as I get back to City Hall. This is tragic. I understand that. I've served on the Housing Authority for four years. I understand the needs of the lower-income families and certainly women in our community, and that's tragic. Shame on us for not doing more. And I'd like the city of Las Vegas to actually do something better than anybody else and have something more for our veterans and our veteran women.
Okay. Can I just do a small follow-up?
Of course you can.
It's basically a statement. I would like to say that the Veterans Administration has nationally made a decision that they will start funding more female veteran programs, so I'm hoping whoever is our city council that they will look into this and try and demand some of that money, because we do have a very high percentage of low-income female veterans in Las Vegas.
Do you have a mic? Thank you very much. Karen Steelman.
Got to wake up.
Is it a happy question or is it one of your attack on questions? It's a straightforward one, a new kind.
Thank you, gentlemen, for joining us here tonight. Mr. Ross, let's start with you. Could you please explain to us a little bit about your recall election, and have you done any introspection since then to see how you might improve your service?
I don't know if I can answer that in 60 seconds, but I'll give it a shot. Unscrupulous businessman in the Northwest wanted a special sweetheart deal that none of the other car dealers had, and I refused to give it to him. My integrity is much more important than giving anyone a sweetheart deal. In regards to introspection, I think I did everything right. I stood by my decisions. I stand by them today. And to quote my opponent, Mr. Rodriguez, you know, we are going to be held accountable for our choices we make. So every decision I made for Ward Six and for the city of Las Vegas, I stand behind 110%.
Thank you. And, Mr. Rodriguez, should you be elected and face a recall election at one point, how do you think you would handle that?
Well, I believe that it's not only our right, but it is our duty and our obligation to question the actions and decisions made by those whom we elect into office, and that they are to be held at a higher standard, you know, based on what they've done. Okay? Not just by the letter of the law, but by the intent of the law. Okay? We can always, there's lawyers that you can hide behind the letters of the law, but the intent of the law will determine whether what you did is ethical or not. Okay? And that's, as leaders of the city, we need to be held accountable in both areas, not just, not just by the letter of the law.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. George Asad.
Thank you, Steve, and thank both of you for your public service and your willingness to serve. Without you, we would not have the Republican form of government that our founding fathers gave us. With regard to veterans that come back, when I was sitting as a judge in municipal court, I saw Vietnam veterans, Desert Storm veterans come back, and they had lost their way, and there really weren't very many services available to them. Would you support an initiative? Because the federal government is certainly lacking on this. It's taking months and sometimes years for veterans to receive the benefits they need, medical treatment, et cetera. Would you, so it falls upon us, it's incumbent upon the local level, local elected officials, to help local veterans. They've served our country, and they deserve our very best. Would you support an initiative for each councilman in each ward to set up something similar to Catholic charities or a rescue mission without raising taxes? The funding could come from people like Republic Services, where the contracts have to be approved by the city and the county, and they have plenty of money. Nevada Power, the casinos, it wouldn't take very much, probably a half a million dollars for each ward to establish a community center or a place, and it could be staffed by volunteers, people who could point these folks in the right direction, sometimes just giving them something to eat, some shelter, helping them with the paperwork to get the filings and things that they need to get done to get services through Aid to Dependent Children and various other programs that are available, healthcare services that are available through federal and state governments. Would you support some type of initiative to approach this problem on a ward-by-ward basis, and that could serve as a model for the county to follow up?
Mr. Rodriguez.
Absolutely. Actually, about four years ago, I went to the Veterans Office to file for my VA benefits. There was about 15 or 20 of us in there, and we had two ladies that were actually helping us. Okay? I mean, the line was, it took forever to get processed. Okay? It almost feels like you're a third-class citizen just trying to, you know, just trying It almost feels like you're a third-class citizen, just trying to, you know, just trying to get what you have coming for you as a veteran, okay? I wanna change that, okay? Two, when I was door-knocking, a gentleman had this great idea, okay, why can't we have, in the municipal level or in our award level, where you can have, you can do stuff that you can sponsor, like movies in the park, okay, where the proceeds go to certain places that are not being funded by the government right now? There's so many things that we can do in the municipal level that, you know, the people wanna get involved in. There's companies out there that would love to sponsor these things, where they would love to put money in the pot that you can give back.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rodriguez. Time is up. Mr. Ross?
Mr. Saad, absolutely support that. I think that's a brilliant idea and a wonderful initiative to put forward. One thing that I have already done, and it's not for those returning veterans, but we do have a Centennial Hills Community Center out there, where I do have a community room where I am allowing the John Lulak post of the Veterans of Foreign Wars to meet in that facility, in that room, until such time they get their own place. So, again, I mean, a couple of the questions regarding veterans, we are not doing enough, and I think that's a brilliant idea to bring forward to the business community. Public-private partnerships are very, very successful in this community, and I'd like to see more of those happen, especially when it benefits our veterans.
Thank you very much. Mr. Berg had a follow-up question.
Yes, one of the impediments to solving the homeless veterans' problem is the actual city ordinances regarding housing, and the idea that certain public safety standards are set at a certain threshold. Would you support the idea of substandard housing for the purposes of transitional housing for veterans, relaxing the municipal ordinances on the housing regulations, so that we could have transitional substandard housing for homeless veterans?
Mr. Ross?
Before I answer that question, Byron, that table's gonna fall down if you don't fix the legs up. Is it broken?
What's that?
Is that, is that-
Yeah, that's about to fall.
The table's about to go down.
It's that way you've been looking.
I'm thinking, is it broken, or is it really gonna go down? And I can see if this- It's substandard.
That's what Travis wants to put in for veterans.
I think I do, and I've never heard, and I understand my position in regards to public safety and what our building codes are for. Public safety always has to be, certainly, the local government's number-one priority, without a doubt. And that's our largest budget line item, is public safety. Cops are fired. In regards to substandard housing, I'm not aware of any issues that have been arisen for transitional housing using substandard housing, and that's never been brought to certainly to my attention, and if you're aware of that, I'd certainly like to know and get more information about it, because we've gotta have that level of transitional housing. Does it have to be substandard? I don't believe so. I think it needs to be safe.
Right.
And I'm in the construction industry, I've been in construction all my life, so, you know, the wires, you call me.
Well, that kinda boils, that kinda goes back to my previous answer. You know, when they get out of the military, there has to be a better way to transition from military life to civilian life, okay? You know, whether it's housing, whether it's food, whether it's training, there's actually programs out there, such as BOWD, where we could put them in the pool of applicants, okay? We can make, you know, we can make, Clark County already has the infrastructure to do that, where people, they have a pool of employees that they can choose from when an employer needs a-
What's BOWD?
It's a program that works with Clark County, and they teach people how to deal with the government, they teach companies how to fill out forms to compete in the government level, small companies to compete in the government level within-
It's time, Mr. Rodriguez. Thank you very much. Do we have any more follow-up questions? Mr. Darby?
Yeah, Steve, yeah, I wasn't gonna bring this up, but since your recall was brought up earlier, I read a rather extensive article, I'm sure it was in the RJ, and surprisingly, they took your side on this, but they described a situation, I'd like you to flesh it out since it was brought up. Where a car dealer wanted a special variance, a very wealthy car dealer, you wouldn't give it to him, and he financed this thing. And you had served, I don't, I want you to say how many years you've served your district, and when the voters in your district got another chance to vote, I'd like you to describe how much you won that election by from the same voters that you had served for quite a while.
Thank you, Mr. Darby. It was an ugly mess, trust me, and this car dealer spent $250,000 to try to get me out of office twice, not once, but twice. First recall attempt failed, second recall attempt, he barely got it through, and I left it to the voters to decide if they wanted me to continue to serve. I'm in my eighth year serving my community, and it's a wonderful privilege to do so, and I take it very seriously. I won that recall election 3 to 1. I took 70% of the vote. I only know two people that have done better, and certainly municipal government, and that's Oscar Goodman and Carolyn Goodman. So, it was an overwhelming statement from my constituents. Some numbers, 2005, when I first ran, 4,500 people voted. 2009, reelection, 4,000 people voted. The recall election, we got 6,500 people to get out and vote and keep me in office. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any, yes, yes, sir.
Just out of curiosity, what was the variance that he wanted, and why wouldn't you issue it?
That I can do in 60 seconds. In Centennial Hills, we have a Town Center Master Plan, and car dealers are required to have a franchise. When the economy turned sour, all of the car dealers collectively came to me and asked me to lift that requirement, because the big car dealers were taking their franchises. Well, I didn't want anyone employed, and I certainly didn't want any boarded-up businesses out there, so I did that. I lifted that requirement for 18 months. The individual we're talking about chose to sell his franchise in the middle of that time period, came to me a month before it expired, and demanded that I put, I extended for another 24 months. Being fair and equitable, I said, "No problem, let's go get the other car dealers on board," which they weren't about to do for this man. Therefore, he wanted me to do it just unilaterally for his own benefit, and I refused to sacrifice my integrity for that.
Would you allow Mr. Rodriguez to address that if you'd like?
Of course, Mr. Rodriguez, please.
Actually, that just kinda, again, goes back to what I said, that as leaders of this community, we are elected, you know, and be held accountable at a higher standard, not just by the letter of the law, but by the intent of the law, okay? If, you know, if you are asked to vote on issues, if it conflicts, not just by the letter of the law, but if it's, for example, if it's something that is unethical, that you should be held accountable in that, not just hide behind the law, that it's okay for me to vote on issues, because I can, according to the law, but know that if I vote on this, it's not exactly ethical for me to vote on it, okay? So, that's how I feel about that.
Okay. I have one follow-up question, and then I have a statement on behalf of veterans and politics, if that's okay. But I was wondering who your hero is, and how you think you can better become like that hero? If I could start with Mr. Rodriguez?
Oh, very easy. My mom. Kidding me? She, she came-
You like your mom, too?
I love my mom.
Hold on. My mom, she's the mother of four children, and she raised us all by herself, including my grandmother. If I could honestly say, if I ever become half the person she ever was, that would probably be one of the greatest accomplishments I have ever achieved in my adult life. I love her to death. She is, you know, she is just the most influential person I have ever had in my entire life.
Thank you. And, Mr. Ross, and you're not allowed to say his mom.
Good answer.
Great answer, Mr. Rodriguez. Yes, his mother. You know, it stands true, I've served in voice scouts for pretty much all my life, and I remember being at a PAC meeting one night, and a young scout asked me who my hero was, and I said exactly what Mr. Rodriguez said, my mother. Amazing woman.
I don't like your mom.
That's okay. Amazing woman, and, but I have to say this, I'm gonna use my second hero, and that would have to be my wife, the mother of my children, the mother who raised all of us. She sets a very good example and sets the bar high. I can tell you this, that I married up, and my mother would say the same thing.
Can I just say something? I think I got the better end of the deal with my mother.
At least you're my shooter, huh?
I need to make a statement on behalf of veterans and politics, and I wanna do it in a, in a way, trying not to offend anybody, okay? Just so you understand, we are very grateful for you coming here and accepting yourself to all these questions and spending your time here. We're very grateful, okay? We are also very grateful to the panel. The panel, they are individuals, you know, they are not specifically representative of veterans and politics, and there was a certain heated question today that veterans and politics would like to apologize for, that this was not the appropriate place to address against you, Mr. Ross. And so, on behalf of veterans and politics, we will apologize for that, and just know that they are individuals, and I'm sure that, you know, knowing you, you will address that issue how it needs to be, so.
No apology needed.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. But we still appreciate every one of our panel, and we appreciate your passion, too, so. This concludes our panel discussion for Las Vegas City Council, Ward 6. Again, thank you very much to the candidates- Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, 30-second closing statements. Here we are. It's the end of the day, I know. Well, I'm not getting paid anything, so.
You're happening.
Yeah, well, I got paid in three bottles of water, so. Okay, Mr. Ross, or, excuse me, Mr. Ross, you started the first statement, so, Mr. Rodriguez, could you start with the-
Can I defer each before beauty?
Go ahead, go ahead.
You know, I can't tell you how much I appreciate this opportunity, and it's an opportunity and it's a privilege, because I know many of you, and I know your service in this community, so it's wonderful that you're doing this. It's wonderful to be in a position, both of us as candidates, I wanna commend Mr. Rodriguez for throwing his hat in the ring. It's definitely a challenge to serve the public in the way that we do, and so I just wanna recognize him and his courage to do so, because it takes a lot of courage to do it. Thank you very much.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Well, I'd like to thank all of you for taking the time to come see us today and ask these tough, tough questions. I enjoyed it a lot. This is my first debate ever in my life, so, thank you very much. You know, again, I believe that, you know, I believe that everybody here truly cares about this city, okay, including Mr. Ross, his crumpled Union card. So cute, by the way. But, thank you very much for everything.
Thank you, thank you very much. Again, thank you all for coming. Now, there's one more part of this discussion, there's for Council, City Council, Ward 1, North Las Vegas, if-